Joint session of the Audit and Finance Committee and the City of Council of Atherton, 4:00 PM at the council chambers in Atherton. And this agenda is a special meeting study session to go over the, okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. We have remote participation from one of our council members, Rick DeGoya, who will be calling in on Zoom, I believe, and our vice mayor is going to be a couple of minutes late. But let's go ahead and have the roll call, please. Oh, okay, so she's here. Right on time, we're just calling the roll.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Woodmer.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Making an entrance.
Going to the Audit and Finance Committee. Community member Skolnick, not present. Community member Pateel, not present. Community member Sleep, also not here yet. Community member Hill. And we'll note that community member Walker plans to join virtually as well.
As a guest. She's as a guest. She didn't, yeah, okay. All right. So this is a special meeting and it, there's any member of the public, they may come up and speak now, but it is reserved for speaking on items that are on the agenda, and you have three minutes. Are there any members of the public who wishes to speak?
No.
There's no one online.
No one online, okay. So we'll go forward with our first item is the results presentation for the Town of Atherton resident survey. And we'll have, George, you want to do a little introduction?
Certainly can. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, the council authorized a community survey last year and formed a standing ad hoc committee, sorry, to, to meet with the Probowski team here to my left, who would be doing the survey on behalf of the town. And it's a satisfaction survey for the community in general was its goal. And so we also reached out to all of the town's various committees and the planning commission to get their input on a question or two that they might feel is important to include in the survey. We hashed those questions out and then passed them along to the Probowski team and they did the survey in April. And so tonight are the results. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Adam.
Adam, Adam Probowski Research. It's been great to work with you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure working with the council committee and with staff. And your, your numbers here are going to be very good, so I'll give you a little sneak preview there. And please, at any point, stop me, but we can certainly have questions at any point. I'll start out with the methodology and, uh-oh. And so to give you a picture, we took a very holistic approach to reaching your residents. And that meant we sent everyone a postcard. Postal service may not have delivered it to 100%, but pretty much everyone should have gotten one, every household. We, we then, they were allowed to use a QR code or go to a link and take the survey. Those who didn't take the survey in that capacity, we sent them an email or a text message if we were able to have that on file in consumer databases. And then if not, we also could, could have called them, and we did. We, we made a lot of outreach in order to get to the 424 completes. To give you some perspective, statewide, we might do 900 or 1,000. You might see 1,200 or so or more, but that's what would be a predictive number statewide. So having 424 in a town the size of Atherton is quite robust. 13 minutes your residents spent taking the survey on average, and the, the majority of them took the survey, completed the survey online, but 24% chose to be on phone. It's just kind of how we communicate today. And some of those were even on landlines, a small percentage of those. And 1% of your residents chose Spanish as the mode for taking the survey. We always point out that that doesn't mean that more people don't speak Spanish or that those people only speak Spanish, it's just the preferred in their household. And so this is a, you know, accurate reflection of your, of your residents. Let me.
He's gonna try to click. There you go.
All right. First question we had was an open-ended question. And there's value here in getting the residents to start thinking what's important to them. There's other data that will be more valuable necessarily than this question, but this is what was top of mind really, essentially. And because for the most part, people aren't necessarily thinking about what's happening, you know, in Atherton, they're thinking about their own lives and their business and their, their family. So the, the top thing that came to mind was public safety, crime, drugs, whatever might be in that category. And these are categorized answers. So you will have a report that, or have access to a report that has all these open-ended responses actually in there, captured and written down. And overlaid on that, you'll have a very clear understanding of who that person is, not by name or identifiable, but by age and gender and ethnicity. So you have an experience of what this person's concerns are and where they are. And so you can see those, those issues there are housing affordability, crime, and then again, housing comes up in general, ADUs, things like that, roads and transportation, and then it kind of drops off significantly from there. Again, this is what was top of mind for your residents. If we move to the next slide, we get to an understanding of the overall quality of life.
Do you want to share yours?
And. I just had a question on the last slide.
Please.
Are we gonna ask during or are we gonna ask at the end?
Please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, interrupt. I didn't, I'm sorry, I just didn't understand what you were asking.
Sorry. What should I do? I'm surprised that the fifth highest item on this one is other. Can you give some more information about what falls under other?
So.
This is an open-ended question, right? So you guys are.
Yeah. And so these are kind of one-off, if it didn't rise to the, you know, it was basically one-off kind of answers. And again, you get to read them and dive in and you'll see things that obviously are much more relevant to your understanding of your community than, than we might have. But essentially, it just, you know, onesies, you know, kind of are one or two people saying something. And yeah, it'll, it'll probably spark some interest. I do always caution council to understand that one comment does not equal 10 or 50 or 100. And, but at the same time, we don't, we don't dismiss any response. We don't dismiss any because they are your residents and they have a valid opinion. All right. So overall quality of life is at 98%. And as I was saying to the mayor earlier, I mean, it's a little bit absurd. This doesn't happen in other places. We don't get numbers like this. Oftentimes when it's in the eighties, I say it's puppies and kittens territory. This is, you know, heavenly, you know, image territory, right? I mean, it just does not happen. So you have a very happy resident base with your quality of life. And, and you do have 2% who say it's poor. And, you know, maybe that's your floor of people who are just never going to say anything positive. And, and that's okay. And you've got a person or two who say unsure. So it's, the reality is if we get to do this in a year or two or five as a, as a track, as a follow-up, in a lot of cases, we often say we'd like to see kind of an upward trend, we're probably not going to see an upward trend. And you'll still be safe in the high eighties. So this is a pretty impressive number. I will, we'll go to the next slide and I'll explain that, obviously, this is an executive version because we don't have, you know, I don't think we want to take, spend hours here tonight doing this. But behind these slides, there's hundreds of slides that show the demographics, and we'll show some of those that are kind of interesting here, show the demographics, how people in different categories look at the data. The truth is your residents have a lot of similarities, so there isn't a lot of big differences, but there's a lot of data behind this. So this slide here talks about your overall services provided. So again, satisfaction here with services provided, maybe putting a finer point on it, and we have 91% say they are satisfied, 6% say they're unsatisfied. And the unsure are, you know, we're very comfortable having unsure because they just, they don't have context, right? Life is fine. I don't really think about city hall. I don't think about how things are going in the town necessarily, so I can be unsure. But very low unsure at that. And so very high numbers, 91% overall satisfaction. This next slide shows the people who are dissatisfied, and you can see that little sliver, 6%, because we're rounding up, who say they're dissatisfied, which represents 25 residents, 5 or 6% of your residents. So I want to make that very clear. This chart, when it says 24%, say bad roads, speed bumps, infrastructure, that is a very slim percentage of your residents that had a very slim, you know, concern over dissatisfaction. So, but that's what those people noted, a quarter of them. And then, you know, things that we might expect to see, kind of the, the character assassination, assassination of government, you're ineffective, and, and, you know, the, the need perhaps to increase public safety. Again, we're talking about one or two respondents in most of these cases. So not dismissing any of these, you could potentially look at this as homework and say, I want to address this and make sure nobody says this in the future, but it's unlikely you'll eliminate them. But certainly, you know, food for thought, I guess you could call it, not necessarily numbers that would drive policy.
So, Adam, just a quick question. 24%, 12%, etc. That's 24% of the 25.
Yes, yes, yes. It's a very, very slim group of people.
24% of the 5, 29%.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly.
It equates to 25 respondents.
Yeah, total, total, yeah. Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
That is, I'm glad you explained that because shocking, you know, if you took it holistically.
And, and sometimes we don't even provide this slide in this kind of format, but I think staff had confidence in this council's ability to discern, and so we brought it to you all.
Okay.
All right. Next up, we talk about police services provided by the town. And 93% are satisfied, 5% dissatisfied, and a couple percent say they're unsure. So really high numbers, chances of improving that pretty slim, but certainly, you know, the, the number you want to potentially maintain. If we go to the next slide, we do have 21 people who said they were dissatisfied. Again, very small numbers, and they had concern over property crime, theft, burglaries. I, I think this is something that George and I talked about, like, that may be a real incident or two, or it also could be what we see on the news, the expectation that there are, you know, CVSs closing down because there are crimes of these, these sorts happening. And, and some of the numbers that might be more negative that we see, not necessarily in Atherton, but in other parts of California and the country, could be part of that national narrative that we're talking about. So I wouldn't read too much into that. Too many police officers, says one person, or, or two. Enforcement is speeding, and, and that is open-ended, so you might discern. I, I'm not sure if that's one person saying they got a ticket and they were upset, and one person saying you weren't enforcing it well enough, but you, you can kind of see a couple of things. Rudeness, right? One person said, very possible, but, but just one person. So, next up, we've got where people get their news and information about Atherton. And this may not be really important from a policy standpoint, but from an outreach standpoint, from a communication standpoint, they are, your residents are looking at things in print, they are looking at the newspaper or things that you send them. And that is unique for most of California. Most of California is seeing things online, they're, they're seeing things on local news, and they're seeing things on blogs. You know, the fact that, that people are seeking it out and reading it in their hands is unique. Word of mouth is also kind of an interesting one because it's the biggest challenge on this list. You can, you can focus your attention on any of these other places while you're unlikely to get a whole lot of TV coverage, but you can kind of put ads out on, let's say, X or Facebook or something like that. But word of mouth is a challenge because you've got to communicate with everybody and have that, have that go across all, all boundaries. So, but this is a clear indicator of how you reach out. If someone says you've got to, you know, be on it next door a whole lot more, you can say, okay, it's 20% of the, of where they get their information, that may or may not be the right choice, but you can certainly maybe, you know, not make Instagram the highlight of your, of your outreach efforts because it's just not where people are looking necessarily. This is something you'll reference going forward all throughout the, all throughout the year or years before you do a next, the next survey.
Adam, would you mind if we also note that the next door piece didn't necessarily mean just from the town? That's how they consume information about the town.
Yes, absolutely, 100%. And it's, yeah, it's not necessarily your comms, it, it could be neighbors talking to neighbors, absolutely. All right. Next up, so we, we have a list here and we asked them, your residents, about services provided by the town, and we asked them, what's personally important to you? And that's, that's asking a little bit extra of people because they don't really think of many of these things as being personally important to them, but we, we asked them to, to dig deep and figure it out and give us an answer. And you can see bunching there at the top are providing, or provide effective public safety and maintaining streets and traffic and, and streets and traffic operations. You'll see that theme come up again. None of these other things are, are things that, you know, would be dismissed because you've got several others in the majority that are personally important to them. And even at the bottom, environmental, climate, sustainability efforts, I, I don't want to suggest that that's something that people don't care about. It's just when you give them this list, they're just mentioning the ones that are really important to them personally. So, and you'll see later, there's, there's definitely a concern over that. The next slide, what we do is we, we ask them, what are you personally satisfied with? And this is a little, even a little bit harder for residents because some of these things that are never on their mind, they're just not thinking about it, so it's even more of a challenge for them. But they give us some answers. You see some, some big majorities there, providing effective public safety, and then the park. And so you can see, right, the top concern was public safety and the top satisfaction is, is, is public safety. That's a pretty good alignment there. And then some other things are kind of jumbled around a little bit, but similarly placed. And so the next slide shows, please.
So on all of these, there is, did we give the people all of these options, or some of these were just off the top of their head?
So these were all, this was a select all that apply, so they got the full list in both segments, and they chose the ones that were important to them.
Didn't anybody offer something that was not yours?
Yes, there, there was a, an, an other option. And so in the personally important, there was 7%, and then in the personally satisfied, there was, there was 1.4%. So you'll, you'll see those, you'll see those represented.
Those are.
You, you will because they're in the open-ended responses and you can read through those. Yeah, absolutely. So next slide shows essentially the delta between the darker blue, which is importance, and satisfaction, which is the lighter blue, and then the orange, which is the delta between the two. And so you can see from a maintaining streets and traffic operation standpoint, your biggest delta is there where it's, it's their, you know, priority, but not necessarily personally satisfied. And this doesn't mean that they say that they are upset, it just indicates that they did not activate their satisfaction level on that particular area. So if I was a policymaker, I might be looking to these, these bigger delta numbers and say, what can we do to bring that delta down? How can we bring back, bring up satisfaction with something that is important to people? That might be a priority. And you can, again, I, I wouldn't dismiss things that are at the bottom because there's still, you know, things of concern, but the delta between satisfaction and, and, and importance are smaller down there. So you can see what, what shows up at the top, land use and drainage and, and street maintenance.
So Adam, can I make a point? I think that the maintenance and amenities of the Atherton Town Center is at 39% of the lighter blue, right? And that's that they're personally satisfied with. Am I reading that correctly?
That's a minus 10, not a 10.
Hi, hi, Rick. Nice to have you join us.
Yes, and, and I see that, and, and from a visualization standpoint, we should be clearer about that and making it clear that there's, there's a flip there, right? There's, there's positive satisfaction over, 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 you know, personally important. So we will, in a, in a final version of this, make that clearer.
So that's, I'm not reading it correctly.
No, you're, I think what you said was correct. So maintenance of amenities is, is a higher level of satisfaction than importance. And so we should, starting there, make it clear that these numbers are essentially flipped, well, in, in several of them.
Well, it's a minus 10, and the same is true of the next item on the park, it's a minus nine.
Correct, correct.
So does that mean they were happy with the town center maintenance, but they don't really care?
Uh.
Because it wasn't high on priority, but they thought we were doing a good job?
Yeah, you have, you're, you're, you're doing good according to their, the things that's important to them. I mean, it's, it's, obviously, it's, it's important to a third of your, you know, a little less than a third of your residents, but their, their overall satisfaction with that is, is relatively high compared to their personally important number.
That was great.
It's like a keep it up kind of.
Yes, keep it up.
Yes, yeah.
They're pouring money into it, okay? Just, why, why don't you get your budget right? Because it's gone up. You gotta pay more money to make it, maintain it. Okay, thank you.
The next slide is a, a different visualization of that, and, and I sometimes hesitate to include it because it looks a little bit confusing, but if you look on the, the left axis there, it's a satisfaction ranking, and, and the bottom there is importance. So top right there is kind of where you want to be in satisfaction and importance converging, and that's where you have, you know, public safety is, is right up there, and then street maintenance is kind of a little bit down from there. And, and there's nothing really in that bottom right-hand corner where there's very low satisfaction and, and high importance, but there are things that are kind of, kind of going that way in that direction, like managing land use, which we saw earlier, like drainage maintenance, things that, you know, you may have desire to address, and we'll talk more about that as we go forward, in people's willingness to, to support that. This may or may not be helpful for you, but we put it in there because we, we liked, it helps us visualize it. Next up is trust. Do they trust you? And, and here's where I have to say, they don't have to trust you. There, there is not a ingrained, I'm gonna try to forward that, uh-oh, let's see here. We, we have been sort of trained to not necessarily trust government, especially of late. And so the idea that, that organically, they're just supposed to trust you is not a, a given in any way. So having 76% of your residents saying wholesale, I agree, I just trust you, is a very high majority. The other part of this, this slide that's important is 16% say, you know, you know, my, my, my trust for you is neither high nor low. And so you have high trust at 76%, neither high nor low at, at 16%. You put those together and we're, you know, in the 90s, and you have this place where it's, it's good, it's very good, strong numbers. 6% of your residents say they have a low level of trust in you. I, we don't know necessarily if that's over a certain thing that you've done or policy you've implemented, or just this kind of general, I don't necessarily trust government. And that's a, it's a perfectly good floor of where you might find people who just are never going to be in a place where they trust you. And 2% validly say they don't know because they're just not thinking about you, they don't know what you're up to, they haven't seen your budget, anything like that. But very high level of trust overall. Next, we, we asked them about their rating for your addressing graffiti, litter, you know, illegal construction, illegal dumping, essentially code enforcement. 83% say they give you a good or excellent rating in, in, in dealing with those issues. Only 4% say poor, and again, 14% say unsure just because they're not, they don't see it. So they're not really sure. High majorities here. Next up, we have the, the question about interacting with town employees. And I laugh a little bit because this is also a little bit absurd. I mean, this doesn't happen in other places, partly because you're a small town, but all partly because you have a high-touch, you know, town hall, city hall, and, and a high-touch staff, and very involved with your, your residents. And so more than two-thirds of your residents have had some interaction. I'll also point out that this doesn't have to be a sit-down or, or talking to someone over the planning counter or a sit-down in someone's office. It could be seeing someone with a, with an Atherton truck or, or, or something, you know, waving to a law enforcement officer with a, with an Atherton logo on the vehicle, right? It doesn't have, it's, we didn't say what that interaction looked like, but very high interaction. And if we look at the, the, the next question, and that is, how would you rate the interaction with the, the town employee? 95% rated good or excellent, and 5% say poor. You'll see a little, right, consistency here, right? About 5% of the people are just gonna say something negative. And, and I think that's one person that says unsure. So, I mean, very, very high marks for the people who they interact with, for your staff. I don't know that you get to do much better than that, George. So, and this is the one, right, if you've got a, I mean, do you have a corporate yard? So, and this is the, the slide you blow up and you put it up in the corporate yard, right? I mean, this is, this is what you show your team and, and make them feel like they're doing a great job. Keep it up. Next, we do show us, you know, of the 20 people, which is 5%, who say they had some sort of negative interaction, the number one answer is actually, of all the possible negative interactions, number one of, what, two or three people there said that it wasn't a good, consistent response, or nobody responded to me. So it wasn't something mean or nasty, it was just they didn't get back to me, they didn't return my voicemail. So, you know, that can certainly be addressed, but certainly it's, it's the, the least of the worst things that could happen. The other things are, are in there, you know, some sort of poor service or, I, I don't really know what necessarily vehicle registration issues you all would be interacting with, but you may be blamed for the DMV there. And, you know, someone, someone didn't know something about zoning.
They don't.
Right, exactly. So really very, very little opportunity for people to say anything here. There was very little negativity, but a couple others in there, you very well may look and see some of these things and say, you know, we want to address it, but small, small numbers. Next up, we have a question about addressing regional housing needs. And, you know, this is a, a tough question for your residents because they are not, you know, up to speed on, on, on housing policy, on, on, you know, where the state is, on, on your ability to effectuate housing and development in the community based upon what the state has done. So I think you gotta give yourself some space here. Sixty, you know, two-thirds, 68% say good or excellent. So that's fantastic, really high number. And I, I should have said this earlier, right, this is not an academic exercise, we're, we're not getting a, a C minus there. You, you know, we're Americans, we don't agree on anything. So if you have 50% plus one, hallelujah, 68%, it's, you know, really, really amazing. So 20% say you're not doing a good job when it comes to addressing regional housing needs. That could be some people who have concern over affordability, where are my kids gonna live? It could be some people who are in the know about state housing law and feel like you're not being responsive enough. Obviously, you've got 12% who say they're unsure, who just don't have a clue. So good numbers, you may want to, to look to address it. Next up, we asked them, how could we improve engagement? How could the town improve engagement with the community on, on this issue, on this, this housing issue? And, you know, not surprising because they like to read things, they say, you know, send me something in the mail, send me a newsletter. Costs money for you all, but that's how they want to hear from you, that might be a, a wise idea. Community meetings, this is one, and I don't think anybody's here, so that may not, oh, one, so it may not be so fulfilling, but that's a possibility. So you can see how, how. So you can see how people fall out there, but not a lot of, not a lot of excitement over anything other than, you know, send me something in the mail. Next up, we have, we have them indicate which goals or objectives are important to you. So we kind of lay out the fact that there's goals and objectives in the coming years. The town is kind of articulated, what are important to you? And you can see, again, they were able to choose as many as they want. And right there at the top is preserving small-town character and quality of life. And so this is different from the services you provide. This is, you know, these articulated goals, and they're really seizing on, in big number, the idea of preserving what you have as a small town. After that, making a safe and walkable environment, which I think, you know, presents some challenges. You know, I saw someone walking their dog on the way here, and there wasn't a sign, walk for her. So that's an opportunity there. And then traffic flow, which we saw earlier. So all these things, you know, are in the mix, and none of them essentially should be dismissed. We do have a follow-up here, because you can see the number four item is mitigating wildfire risk and increased community beautification by undergrounding utility lines. We asked the next question among those people, which was, you know, more than half of your residents who said underground power lines. We said, would you be willing to pay to underground utilities? And, which would mitigate fire risk, and it would come in some sort of revenue mechanism, like a tax or a bond or a fee. So we didn't give a lot of clarity there. We didn't say it's $5 a month or $5,000 a year. We didn't give them any clarity at all. I'm sure it wouldn't be $5,000 a year. But 65% of your 50% say they are in favor. They would vote yes. What's that? No, no, no. Half of your residents said.
That's like 200 and something.
Yeah, yeah. So a big chunk of your residents are indicating that they would, they would be willing to pay for it. And there's a couple of factors here. Respondents older than 65 were more willing to vote yes. Also, Asian respondents are less willing to, than other ethnic groups. So a couple of things we called out there, you can see those numbers at the bottom. You can see, you know, age categories that have, you know, the blue is the higher. And you can see greater unsure with certain demographics.
I think it's also important to note, and maybe I can expand a little bit, but to get the tax measure approved, it's 66 and two-thirds. And this doesn't include numbers. So when you do the study and add the number to it and say you're gonna end up paying X, that number might go down.
It might go up.
It could go up. The path to, and I'm sure City Manager knows, and you probably are familiar, the path to a ballot measure that raises revenue is very different than the path that is taken for a community survey. It's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
42%.
Yeah, so, and, I mean, there would be, typically, you would do, unique to the ballot measure or propose their thought, contemplated ballot measure poll on that subject to ascertain whether there's a possibility. And then that would be part of your, you know, process of deciding whether to do outreach on that subject. It's, I mean, we have two particular clients right now. One city that's moving ahead with a tax measure that has support, and another that is not because they found out through a poll that they don't. So really, high value in that before, yes?
For your experience, this number that we're looking at here, is that enough for us? Is it significant enough that we would consider going forward with addressing this?
Yeah, I think it's, I would call it directional, right? I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it determinative, but I would call it directional, absolutely. I think it's, if it's, you know, a decision to move forward, I think further research on that particular topic is definitely warranted.
I think it would be something council should talk about and be aware that launching campaigns of that nature, you know, to do the polling first. And, but it's a, it's a big lift. We've done it before for the parcel tax, you know, several years running. And we've always gone out for a poll and got input first.
Yeah.
But this is a lot of education, and it's a lot of work, need residents to get involved.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a comment?
Oh, Rick, Rick wants to.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Oh, yes, Tom was about to say something, and then can you speak after Tom?
Sure.
He needs a mic.
You can't hear him online.
Some people would have said that mitigating fire risk was important, but then, when you came to the next question, they already have underground utilities, like most of London would. So then they wouldn't really know how to answer the question, I would think.
I think you're right, from a personal context standpoint, but it's still the town as a whole, so they could have had commentary based upon the broader community, not necessarily their neighborhood.
Adam, let Councilmember Degoya speak. Rick?
I was just gonna say, this item just asks if people are willing to pay something. And if you recall, when we looked at undergrounding the lines for the, whatever it is, 100 or 250 yards on Fair Oaks at the front of the town parcel that runs along Fair Oaks, it was more than $1 million. So if we're gonna do any research on this, we need to get real numbers about approximately what it would cost, because I think it's about $100,000 of property, at least. And we have to get that information. It's more like $5,000 a month for the rest of their ownership than $5 a month.
Yeah, I'm sure there's an engineer's report.
Excellent point, Councilmember Degoya, thank you. Okay, Adam?
Going to the next slide, oh, there we go, I can move it. Next slide, we then talk about preventing flooding during severe weather. And again, there could be, there are people or communities that, parts of the community that experience flooding and parts that don't, so that might impact the answers to this question. But two-thirds of all your residents say that it is important to them that there is something done, and they express a willingness, to some degree, in responding here to supporting it. The idea of raising some sort of revenue to prevent flooding during severe weather. You can see we call out a difference between men and women. There's a smarter gender here. And they, they're, you know, not dramatically different, but there is a difference there, and it's worth noting and understanding that.
You didn't say which gender.
Yeah, I did not say which gender, no.
Adam, could it be that there are more women actually took the survey than men?
There are a few, actually.
You do have that.
We do, we'll have it at the end with the demographics, but it's, we're very close together, right? It's a, you're not that different than America and the rest of the world, so yeah. Just a few more, a few percentage points. And then specifically, would you be willing to pay for flood mitigation projects to protect Atherton from flood? When we get to that group of people who say it's important, 53% say yes, I'd be willing to pay for it. So now, I think there may be, whereas with, with the undergrounding, I think there's probably no way around doing a special tax for that. I think there could be a possibility of integrating flood mitigation into a general tax. I'm not, you know, I'm not making, you know, suggesting anything, but if that's the case, then a 53% majority may have value because you're not gonna achieve two-thirds, but you could have half. So something to consider. And a big group of people who are unsure, which, you know, again, we don't put a fine point on it, we don't tell them how much. So you could very well attract significant more support from that unsure if they had a sense of what that really would cost. And the opposite is true as well. The next slide, we, whoops. The next slide, we talk about efforts to solicit public input and engagement from residents, engage residents. How would they rate you all at doing that? 74% say you're doing excellent or good job, and 16% say poor, 10% don't know. And that's a, that's an outreach effort, that's an education effort. I expect you have a lot of ways for engagement, but there just isn't the knowledge because they're not, there's an attention issue and the ability to kind of also perhaps think that government isn't doing enough. So that's a part of that, that's 16%, and it's a pretty small number. And one thing I'll point out there is, one of the ways we look at data, I don't know if that'll work on there, no, it doesn't, is not just the overall numbers, but the delta between that poor and that good is really, really strong. It's a massive delta. And so that towering difference is something to be proud of. Next up, whoops. We asked them how you'd prefer the town to contact you in the case of an emergency. Big, big majority, 70% say text me. I don't know if you have everybody, have everybody's cell phone number, or if they necessarily want to give it to you, but that is how they say they want to be communicated with. So this is, this is for you to figure out, the puzzle for you to figure out. Because really, nothing else on there, you know, rises to any particular level. And there's some recognition, kind of cool, of your ADAPT program that we'll talk about in a minute. Kind of cool, there's a few people that know about it. And then we have, whoops. We asked them about what features would you like to see improved at the park? You know, most people say unsure, because they're just not, I mean, you don't have engagement with it, they don't go. But you can see, we gave them a list, and they chose activity space, open space, picnic. You can kind of see where their priorities are. This may very well be, you know, a homework list, if you want to perhaps engage that way, yeah.
What is an activity space? Because we have playground, like we have other, like, what is an activity space in the context of Holbrook Palmer Park, exactly?
I'd kind of characterize it maybe as sports court, or bocce ball court, or somewhere where you could come and do an activity.
Pickleball. Yeah.
And was this an open list where people could say anything? Or why didn't we write tennis and pickleball as an option in here?
Good question, don't know. I'm not sure why we didn't specify that way, but when we think of activity spaces at the park as an active park, we are talking about tennis.
Yeah.
Baseball, and more active sports-type activities. So that could have been anything. And if we had listed tennis, it might have parked that out a little better.
Right, I'm just wondering if that is tennis.
Could be.
Tennis or baseball.
Yeah. So this is a very specific question. We talked about the Environmental Programs Committee and the Climate Action Plan. And we asked them of the list that we provide to them, which are your top priorities for addressing environmental issues? Right on the top is waste disposal and recycling. This is, and there's a reason for this. This is something that I can do, right? As a resident, I can be active with something like this. So that's probably a big part of why that's high on the list. Air quality, electric readiness, water conservation. I mean, certainly, air quality, a very difficult part of action from the city of Atherton. So again, none of these to be dismissed, but, you know, you can see sea level rise or biodiversity, probably not the focus that these other ones at the higher end are priorities for the public, for your community. Yeah.
Speak into the.
In the, in the survey, was there an explanation of what all of these were? Or did it literally just say electric readiness?
It just said those words, said those words.
So do you think it's possible that people picked waste disposal and recycling because they knew what it was compared to what electric readiness means?
It's possible.
Like, I don't know, like.
Like EV readiness?
Right, like, I don't, for someone who is not as, like, in the weeds on climate action goals, electric readiness might not mean anything to them. So I wouldn't, I'm just curious, I'm just curious.
I think what I said.
Yeah, it's shorthandy, I'm just curious.
Yeah, what I said early on is, this is a very specific question. And I think we're, again, kind of asking a lot of the residents because whether the vernacular is familiar or not, it's very hard to make decisions on this because it's just not a part of their daily consideration set. I mean, they know what sea level rise is and things like that, but it's just not, in the context of the committee, in the context of the Climate Action Plan, it's hard for people to make choices like that. So we talked about your ADAPT program. We tell them about it, and we ask, were you aware of the program? 71% say they were aware. Now, we just told them about it, so they may, you know, be a little bit more likely to say that they were aware. But you still have 26% who say they weren't aware, and some others that I'm just not sure. So that's, you know, a positive place. This might be one of the only ones where you poll again in a year, two, five, whatever. That number could potentially go up if that's something that you want to happen, if you want to really roll that out in a bigger way. That's a high chance you could do that. And then we talk about preparedness, right? It would take, you could be on your own for four to seven days, which I've never asked a question like this. This is kind of scary to put it in those terms, right? And without government. And, you know, are you prepared in your home for a local disaster such as the earthquake in kind of this context? So 54% say, you know, I am not so prepared. And then another 6% say, I'm not prepared at all. So you have a strong majority there in the 60s saying, we're not prepared. 3% unsure, and that's okay, right? My spouse might be the one that prepares for this sort of thing. I don't know what's in that, you know, in that box over there. And you do have, you know, more than a third, 37%, who say they are well-prepared. So that's a good foundation, if you're trying to improve those numbers. This is another one where you could potentially improve the numbers. What's kind of cool is, we did have the forethought to go and ask a follow-up question and say, what are the following most impact your ability to prepare? So among those people who are not prepared, what is it that's kind of a barrier for you? And one is refreshing preparedness supplies, which is actually not such a terrible thing, because, you know, bottled water is gonna be good for a pretty long time, so that wouldn't be terrible. Finding the time, that's something we see across all behavioral change research that we do. People just suggest that they don't have the time for it, and that's not something you can really accommodate, you can help them with. Finding relevant information is something that you can accommodate and help them with because that can really make a difference. And, you know, and kind of coupling that with knowing how to prepare for special needs situations. So really, some opportunity for education there to lift these numbers up and give people the opportunity to reduce the barriers. I do enjoy the, I mean, the one at the end, getting other peoples in the household to engage. That's a, that's an inter-family issue that I'm not sure you can help with.
It's outside of our realm of responsibility.
All right, so your demographics, this is your town. We approximated, based on census, your residents within a couple percentage points or even less in each one of these, in each one of these demographics. So you can see, you know, homeownership and children in the home and ethnicity age. This is your town, this is what they look like. Obviously, it's an older community, and it's a very white Caucasian community. And high homeownership, right? Lower children in the home than almost any other town, city in town we poll in, in California. So pretty, pretty unique, some of those numbers are pretty unique. And we, again, matched these to your census to make sure we were accurately. And we, again, matched these to your census to make sure we were accurately reflecting the community. We didn't have to do any trickery with numbers, there's no waiting, this was one-to-one answers from individuals telling us what they thought. And so, again, a lot of data right here, but hundreds and hundreds of pages in reporting, if anyone decides, and I'm sure staff will, and we will be available to dive in further with staff, and we are infinitely available if there's a desire for any specialized reporting, whether it's a one-page memo, or, you know, any kind of feedback on anything the town's about to do over the course of the next six months, year, we want to be involved in helping you have the data guide those decisions.
Thank you, Adam, that's a great report. It is online, isn't it, the whole report?
This is online, the detailed data that Adam was talking about is not online.
Okay, it seemed like we got a more detailed report initially, the committee.
You got a few more questions, charts, but those are removed.
Is there a reason we could not put it online?
They weren't put online, we could put that online, though. What I wouldn't put online is the thousand-page.
It's a thousand, have you seen the thousand page?
No, I haven't.
No, I haven't either.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, of course.
Do we do a press release when we get a study like this, obviously very positive study? Do we do a city press release?
We can, yeah, we can decide today, now that we've received the report, the full council has received the report, to say, it would be really important to do a press release and like, get it plastered on the Post or Daily Journal.
You could see the sarcastic things that we might get, that, you know.
Well, I think you'd have to really.
The top real estate price in the country, and of course they're going to be happy, if they're not happy, then, you know. So I don't know, you run the risk.
The press.
Press did get this presentation, so we can craft our own narrative.
Is there any message, comments from Mr. DeGoya online? Okay, thank you. Any members, other members of council have any comments for Adam?
Great job.
Really, thank you, and I hope you guys enjoyed doing it and seeing the results, and, yeah.
And I assume you'll send us the bigger detail.
Yes, the bigger detail, and we can, yeah, work through that in any capacity.
All council members.
All council members, yes. Of course.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, we don't have to move to approve or anything, we just receive, be happy that our residents are happy, or at least four hundred and twenty-four of them are.
Statistically, well exemplified.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. So Adam, you are free to go.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm sure you do not want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
If you need my feedback on the budget, I'm happy to provide it, but I feel like you've got it handled.
I think part of your expenses is in the budget, you know, it was a year ago that council said we wanted to, you know, do a survey, and I think it was like a year ago May that we, you know, moved to do that, and it did take about a year to put it all together. Thank you, Councilmember Hawkins-Mamillion, for all your input in doing the survey, you know, prep and everything. Yeah, it was fun to do. Okay, shall we take a deep breath and dive into our next item, item number two, which is the review of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six town budget, all funds. We're just going to be looking at the changes only, and then direct direction regarding an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. And city manager, do you want to take the first stab and then hand it over to Robert?
So it's a pleasure of the council, we can go through the entire presentation from the last meeting, or we can take Q and A, and go through the high-level stuff as those Q and A come up. Basically, the staff report, beginning on page, page three of the staff report, talks about the minor adjustments that were made to the administrative departmental level items, about one hundred and twenty-four thousand, and Robert can answer any questions on those items, and the internal service fund items, changes if there were any. The CIP starts on page four, I'm sorry, page three of the staff report at the very bottom, changes to the baseline projects, and then carries over to the next page. Those are the changes that we discussed in detail as a council meeting.
Somebody's talking that doesn't have their mic on.
Okay, I might make a comment. The first comment where he said it was on page three, the changes, it's actually three of ten, it's page two. So it's page forty-one of one twenty-six in our binder, and then page three of ten is page forty-two of one twenty-six.
Sorry about that, missed page numbered at the top.
Just a little missing, somebody's phone's going off.
Refrigerator's open.
Oh.
It's the refrigerator alarm, yeah.
Somebody left it open.
Yeah.
And, and you're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to restrict your kitchen privileges.
So beginning with that, changes to the baseline projects, as I was saying, that's what the council discussed at the last council meeting, those are all those various changes that we did to the baseline projects, the continuing projects, and then the new projects that we added in, as we let the council kind of make the sausage of the town's capital improvement program. And then, following that, is a summary of all the revenue that comes in, that we talked about, the offsetting revenue from the library, or the employee benefits fund, or any grants or partner agency contributions like the county or SMCTA. And those are the big discussions. What we're really hoping to get out of this evening's conversation is, is there anything further that the council wants to add to the CIP? Or are there changes you want to make to the proposed discretionary payment of the three million dollars? I've had one-on-one conversations with all members of the council, we sort of talked about the capacity of staff to do capital projects over the next one, two, three, four, five years, the capacity of the community to handle additional capital improvement projects over the next few years, and the reality of whether those would actually occur during that timeframe. We also talked about during one-on-one conversations about the reality of any grants, and the most significant dollar figure in there is a three million dollar contribution to the ECR Selby Traffic Signal and the ECR Drainage North End Improvements. And that's not really a grant, those are kind of partner agency funds, because that signal has three partners in it, it's got the county, and Caltrans, and the town. So those are contributing funds. So if Caltrans says, absolutely not, we're not going to do that traffic signal, that traffic signal's not going to happen, but it's unlikely that the town's going to challenge Caltrans to put that in and pay with our own dime, it just wouldn't happen. So we wouldn't do the project, and we wouldn't need the additional contribution. Then we also talked about the availability of other funds. There is an unallocated CIP balance that you'll see on one of the further spreadsheets in your staff report, that's really a number of about 1.2 million, not the $2 million number that's shown there, it's about 1.2, Robert will make a correction to that, but that is sitting in the CIP fund as an unallocated balance going forward that you could use if we wanted to identify a future project and kind of squeeze that in there. So there's that money, there's the additional general fund money of about a million or so, the $2 million surplus that you still see. Plus, as has been pointed out on numerous occasions, we do underestimate revenues and overestimate expenditures, so we're always kind of running that little bit of a surplus, and that'll flow additional funds through, and projects go slow. This is government, it takes a little time to move things through, we are still working on projects from about one or two fiscal years ago to move those forward. So that's a balance that's sitting in the CIP actual fund, it's attributed to a specific project, and as that project moves along, we draw that down. So that's a high level, and we're happy to answer any specific questions.
I have a really quick question, where does ERAF come into play here?
It's a revenue that we take in below the line, but I mean by below the line is, we have our operational expenditures and our operational revenues, and that's how we budget, but we calculate the revenue from ERAF outside of that, and we use that every year toward one-time capital projects, we're paying down long-term debt, and it is sitting at about 2.5 million, 2.5 million in revenue.
And that number has, was not part of your report?
It is part of that report. It's part of that financial outlook spreadsheet, it flows through as a revenue.
Of which one?
And that's impressive, he's looking at a very small spreadsheet over there.
The excess, I don't know. If you look at this page at the back, the gray back, and it's in, it's in green, wait a minute, no, it's in gray, it's item eleven, twelve, it says four percent excess ERAF.
But it's in that, it's in that spreadsheet, and it flows through the revenues and expenditures.
And the VLF?
The same thing, it's also below the line.
And so those funds are what you are allocating as excess funds?
They end up being excess funds, but on that financial, when we treat them in our budget that way, but in the financial outlook spreadsheet, we threw everything in there just so the council had a good understanding of what the unallocated fund balances would be.
Can I call for any comments from any member of the public? Oh, and Ann has joined us, welcome, Ann. Thank you, and is any, Rick, would, can we just ask if you have any comments at this time, since you're online, that you'd like to bring up now, or you want to wait?
I mean, I've got a number of comments, I've talked to George about all of them, I'd say, I'm not sure which is most material, there, I had comments about both the proposed cost of the master plan update being $350,000, I thought was $100,000 too much. I think that plan is going to be different than the drainage plan update.
You're talking about the park master plan, or?
Correct, the park master plan update is, is.
Five hundred and thirty?
No, 350,000 is what is being shown on page five of pot five in the staff report. And it also is being shown to come the year at, before the drainage plan, master plan, I thought that at the last meeting, we kind of had planned, we'd be doing the park, the bike park master plan over this next year, and then following that, we do the drainage plan, and then we do the park master plan. And the staff report has the latter two reversed. The only other, I'd say, fairly material comment that I had was that the staff report shows that the cost of looking at one station lane and the changes to one station lane are about $800,000, 200,000 in, I think, twenty-five, twenty-six, and the remainder, maybe it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And 300,000 of that would be coming from the library, and I thought that more should be coming from the library, because the reason we're really looking at that is to benefit the library moving programs, making it easier for people to transit between the library and the park. So I don't know, we don't have to talk about that now, but at some point, I think those will be relevant.
And so if I could kind of summarize what he said, it was reducing the park master plan from 350,000 down to 250,000 as a more realistic estimate of the cost of the park master plan, and flipping the order of the park master plan and the drainage master plan updates, that we have them in here, and then adding in and out here for the capital construction estimate on station lane, some additional library funds and contribution for that project.
Okay, are we looking at this chart?
He's sort of looking throughout the staff report.
But I'm looking at this chart, George.
ECL projects.
I know, I know.
Always my question.
We're taking it this way, okay, this is what we're doing, we didn't say that Robert had to do the entire staff report, you know, and read it and summarize it, George did a little one, and we can take it piece by piece, comment by comment.
And so that chart has a higher number in there, because it's a combination of a couple different projects, to the left of that number, you see CP four and HPP five, those are specific project types, HPP five is the master plan, correct? And CP four is another project on the list.
Well, okay, that's a little misleading to me, but coming back.
But if the council's consensus is on those issues, we could certainly take those in as well.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I have a question about the station lane project, because at our Transportation Committee meeting last week.
Speak up.
Can you guys hear me online? The Maple Lane neighborhood is very mobilized, they came to their office hours, they came to the Transportation Committee, the other adjacent neighborhoods are also pretty mobilized, there is a real parking issue here, I couldn't find parking for this meeting today because we, the library is doing Wednesday afternoon programming, so it's a real issue, and there's also a lot of safety issues surrounding it, so a lot of what we had discussed was station lane, like looking at the connection between the library and, but is this also going to be looking at all the parking?
Yes, so the way I look at it, and I'll jump in here, Robert, the way I look at it, and I think I expressed it to a couple members of the council during my one-on-one, is it's a holistic issue. We're impacted here at the town center by its success, and that success impacts the entire neighborhood around the town center. So the library is a huge component of that, so when I'm thinking about improvements on station lane and improvements in the town center parking area, that's all related to the success of the library. And so I'm looking at it holistically, so when we look at station lane and the improvements there, we're also going to be looking at and expanding the scope of that study and analysis to look at the parking issues, the traffic issues, the flow of traffic, the impact on fair oaks, and all of that.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, all of that.
Okay, I would suggest maybe we rename it.
Yeah, might be a good idea to do that.
Be more clear, especially to that neighborhood, that it's not exclusive to that street, that we're looking at the whole.
Yeah, well, we could put some more text around it.
It's not just station lane, it's all of it, I think would be a useful.
More of a town center circulation solution plan, something like that.
Town center circulation project?
Yeah.
Plan?
Parking and circulation and whatever.
Yeah.
Very good comments, are you happy with that result? Yes, okay. Councilmember Widmer, you're up.
Okay, just comments, first off, I agree with Rick that I, park master plan, thought we had agreed it was going to be done, so, glad that we've got that covered. I think that also, going through the list of projects, there is a BL six, which is Facilities Replacement Fund, $300,000 every year. So my comment to the rest of the council is this, this council here, over the last couple of years, has done a lot to fix the financials of this town. We have paid down the cost and changed the benefit programs, in a significant amount of money into that, that previous councils should have done, but we've had to make those sacrifices. We're in the process, and possibly today, continuing, continuing to pay down our pension fund, which is something that is going to, you know, if you're watching everything, it's going to bankrupt towns in the future. And, you know, I think we're taking a responsible approach to that, hopefully we can get it down to a reasonable number like 10 million, and let it continue on for future generations to pay down. We had to make terrific sacrifices to get this facility built, we had to, we bypassed a lot of projects that we could have been doing in drainage and in other areas, because this was the most important thing we're doing. And now, we're paying for the next generation's building, and I don't think that that's right, not at this point in time, when we still have things like drainage, and we're talking about bike lanes and things like that, I do not think that we should be putting in $300,000 a year to this. I spoke with the, with the city manager about it, and I want to make sure that we all agree that that's what the whole council wants to do, that's fine, but I don't think. That's fine. But I don't think we need to gift another building to, to a future generation, first off. Secondly, I don't think this building is going to deteriorate substantially over the next 20 to 30 years. Interior may need to be refreshed and updated, but it's not going to fall down, not like when we were living in this essentially a portable facility. Okay? It's not the same thing. I don't think we pay for the next generation. Again, we've already covered the past generations and we're making things so much better for them moving forward, a future council in 10, 15 years. They won't have these problems that we had to go through. I disagree with the $300,000. I think we should discuss it and/or vote on it at this point in time. Thank you.
Where does it show up? Where does that show, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Where does that number show up in this? Cause I didn't.
It's right here. Take this page.
Yes.
And turn it over. It's the, it's the gray page. It's right, no, uh, your, your left hand. And it's BL6, project line 123456, facility replacement fund. I'm going to make a comment and I want to say thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Widmer for acknowledging the sacrifices that this council made, the previous councils over the last 10, 12 years, 15 years to plan and build this facility. The reason that it was so hard and we had to make those sacrifices is because the previous councils did not take in, take any action to create a reserve fund for rebuilding. And when we finished this, I thought we all took a pledge to say that we would not let that happen to future councils in the future. We would not, um, put aside some, maybe $300,000 is too much right now. But I do believe that we need to put aside money now, when we have the money into a reserve fund for future repairs, future, um, improvements. I just have to say, I built my house in 2002, 2003 and I'm having to pay a whole lot of money to have dry rot repaired, it repainted and fixing it up. And, you know, it's not falling down, but if I didn't have that extra money that I had put aside, you know, I wouldn't be able to do it.
I can go with 100,000, but I can't go with 300,000.
Okay. Well, we're not there yet. Let's hear from Vice Mayor.
I have questions on that topic because I'm, um, I think right now we're paying off the debt for the current town center and putting money towards a future town center. So I, I fundamentally am not sure why we're paying for two town centers every year right now. So I'm wondering, but I am with you in that we should be saving money for a future town center. I'm wondering when our debt will be paid off and if maybe we just keep making those payments. You know, do the debt and then switch to saving once immediately, it seems.
So the, the debt service is currently about 871,000, the, per year. The last payment's in fiscal year 2930. It's at the very end of your financial outlook spreadsheet. We, for the last two fiscal years, have contributed $250,000 a year to that facility replacement fund. Robert then shifts that over to Fund 406 and it's sitting there. So we've got half a million dollars sitting in that particular fund for facility replacement. It, whatever dollar figure you want to put aside to it, we think you should put something aside because this facility, in addition to being very nice, is also very expensive. The heat pump system, the elevator system, they, they have some issues. And so eventually we're going to need to think about replacement of those systems and they are not cheap. Uh, and that's where we would draw those funds from when we do that. So it's not just building the new town center. It's maintaining our current one.
Councilmember Hawkins, go ahead.
The, the line above that, that BL4 says town center improvements and we're already putting aside 100,000 annually. Would that also be used for what you're talking about?
No, that's.
So what are town center improvements then if they're not what you're talking about?
Right. At the last meeting, we talked about that's where we would do some parking lot improvements or putting another EV station or something in the town center to improve the town center's grounds. Uh, but not the building and facility replacement.
And everything. So that was a separate item. Yeah. Uh, Councilmember DeGolia, do you have a comment about this?
Uh, yes, I do. Um, I thought that, uh, what Elizabeth said was well stated. Uh, we, we did agree to put money aside for the future. The only reason we haven't paid off the debt is because it's at 2% interest. And the finance committee gave us very good advice and direction that it didn't make sense to pay off debt at 2% interest, that we should use that money to reduce our obligations around, um, the pension matters. And we've done that. And I think we're going to do another $3 million today, which I think is absolutely the right thing to do. I, I think we need to put money toward the future, uh, because we faced a 30-some million dollar bill because the past councils hadn't done anything. And I think it's the right thing for us to do. I don't have any problem with the $300,000.
Thank you. I just want to follow up and, um, just kind of respond to Vice Mayor's concept that we're, um, paying for two town centers at this time. It's very different. The reason we have debt is because, well, our fundraising fell short. We were supposed to, um, do all this on fundraising. We were very fortunate that at the time when we really needed it, the interest rate was so low that we were able to get the debt. And we've structured it that way. That is a separate entity. It's, and then the replacement fund is a separate entity. Uh, so the last couple of years, we've been putting in 250,000, maybe 300 is, is too high. I would think 200,000 or 250,000, I think 100,000 is too low. So that would be a discussion that we should come to terms with and, um, you know, make a decision on. So, um, I guess, yes, Diana?
I have a question. So in terms of doing repairs of facilities and all the examples that you gave, this is not the only bucket for that. What are the other buckets that pay for things like that?
There's, there's many of them. Some of them are kind of specific to the public works department in the park or in the field, streets and roads. There's some repairs and maintenance line items within each departmental budget. Within the capital improvement budget, this is the only one for capital infrastructure, like the landscaping out here in the town center. That's where we would pull from that 100,000 dollars that you were talking about.
TC1, TC2, BL6, BL5, BL4.
Well, like you're, you're talking about the solar carports, EV charging.
Yeah, they're all improved.
We're, yeah, adding, adding to the town center.
Specific projects versus maintenance and repair versus, uh, future, future building.
So this is specifically future building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Specifically to a future building. So it's.
Specifically. Yeah.
Sorry. I'm just, I'm trying to connect. So when we say a facility replacement fund, this is also maintenance fund. Or replacing, big, big replacements within the structure, which is, I would argue, maintenance.
Yeah.
Money for the next generation.
The.
You said if the heat pump system fails.
How much is the heat pump?
Which I totally hear you is expensive, but I would view replacing an existing structure as maintenance. So I'm struggling with.
Right. So, so maybe, maybe I can interject. There's a difference between day-to-day maintenance and things that we have to account for just to keep the place running. There are systems that have, the building, we can say has a life maybe of 40, 50 years, whatever that is. There are systems within the building that have shorter lifespans. And so if we say, for example, uh, the heat pump has a lifespan of 15 years or some other system has a lifespan of 10, we have this bucket of money, not just to cover the replacement of the entire building, but to cover these big ticket system things, have that bucket of money available. So we're not saying, oh, council, we need two and a half million dollars to replace X.
You can go, it costs that much?
Huh?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm going to say, I'm not going to say that that costs that now. I don't know what things are going to cost in 10 or 15.
That's fair.
Right? And so you can consider it this way, like for your house. You have, let me say, if you have an older home that has an older roof, you plan, save money to replace it at some point. These days, the roofing, you know, the roof warranties are a lot better than they used to be. They're now 30, 40, 50 years long. But if you bought a house that's 20 years old, you're going to have to plan to replace it while you live there.
Okay. So essentially this is like the PD's equipment replacement fund where we're putting money against it so that we can take big purchases later annually and also have more money for a future whole new structure.
Yes. Appreciation.
And how did we get to the 300,000 number?
We started at 400, 500,000. And then the council lowered it initially to 250 while the building was still new. Uh, and then now we're two, three years down the line and now we're at 300,000 as a number that came up at the last budget meeting. If the council wants to pick a different number, it's up to the council. I, I, I sort of am in between, you know, councilmember, uh, Widmer and, and the mayor in that maybe 300 isn't. Maybe we don't need 300, but 100K is a little too low. I'd pick it more around 200 or 250.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll agree to the 200. I, you know, and that's $50,000 less than we did the last two years.
I understand.
Okay.
And then maybe you.
We already got a starter kit, so to speak, of money. Okay, we have money there.
You feel pretty comfortable with a half a million in your pocket?
And then, and then on top of that, you know, we, we look at, if things go out, you know, we do have our equipment replacement funds too. We have a lot of funds here.
That's just for people.
Well, yeah, but we're going to quickly deplete our extra monies pretty soon at the end of this meeting.
But it's, it's certainly something you can evaluate again, as the vice mayor indicated, once the COP is paid off.
Yeah.
And, and we can do system assessments periodically.
Well, because I think one of your assessments is when the fee, the loan is paid off, then we'll just keep throwing that to Calpers.
You could do that too.
So, um, it, you can only do so much with it, right?
Got three years to vote on that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, but that debt will be paid off in three years at the end of?
Eight or 20, 23.
This five-year grid is the whole life of that debt.
Yeah. We had a five-year call option on it and five-year is this month, actually.
Okay. You want to, you want to call it?
No, no.
Pay it off?
No.
I mean, we do that and save some money.
We have five years left.
Not to, yeah. Right.
What do you think, Mr. Palito? You've got other, you've got other things to do with the money. I think, okay. Mr. DeGolia, do you, um, have any comments about that, about going to 200?
I, personally, I think it's a mistake. Uh, we, if you look at how long it's going to take to put the replacement cost for this facility together, it's probably 50 years. And you can run the numbers. It's just saying to future councils that they have to put in more.
It's being penny wise and pound.
I, yeah, I, I'd stay with the 250 that we started with, but.
That's, that fits best to me, the 250.
300 now.
Well, let's go to 250. All right. Going once, going twice, 250.
Sold.
Sold. Okay, let's go.
Is that the end of the meeting?
Oh, no, we haven't gotten to the fun part yet. Okay? All right. So.
So if, that's the kind of the conversation around the CIP, but the big discussion, big question we need answered is what's the amount of the discretionary, additional discretionary payment, if any?
Additional discretionary payments?
To pension, if any.
Oh, to that. I thought we were all getting extra pay, you know?
That'd be nice.
Councilmember DeGolia?
I thought that at the last meeting, we talked about, and I, I thought there was no disagreement to put 2.2 million into it plus 800,000 from the existing employee account.
There, there was discussion, but not direction. Uh, the council meeting kind of broke up at that point. And so we didn't have all the numbers in that spreadsheet and the council wanted to see that before making that final determination. So we did put all the numbers in and we added the $3 million in there for the discretionary payment with the employee benefit fund offset of 800,000.
And you have reassured us.
I have.
You have reassured us that with all the capital improvement projects we have on our plate that we have approved over the next four to five years, that's kind of all that we can swallow.
Yes.
So trying to use that money for other capital improvement project during those next four to five years, not only would it tank staff, but it would also stretch the limits of patience of our residents.
I believe so.
Well, it also, the, uh, the spreadsheet, the financial planning, out-year financial planning tool spreadsheet shows that there's sufficient, a net available fund balance after the 5% hedge amount. Uh, and that's one thing we didn't have before that we wanted. So I think that's important information that we can do it.
With all that good new information, I'm on board.
But that's the third vote. Push into it.
Well, Ann has her hand up.
Ann, hi, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Uh, no worries. Um, so I, I just wanted to say that one of the things I noticed on this, um, this big spreadsheet was I followed across the line that has the unfunded accrued liability. It's like the third one up from the bottom. And I looked. But I found this.
You can use my little one if you like.
Big guy. But, uh, anyway, what, what, what I, what made me feel really good about making the $3 million payment, a potential payment, uh, to the, as an ADP, was when I looked at that line and followed it across. And the difference between our unfunded liability based on this five-year, um, out-year planning tool, it starts at 17.5 million and ends at 12.3 million, which when you do the math says that we do this 3 million, uh, ADP now, and over the next five years, we are paying less, less than 3 million, excuse me. The, the amount of our total unfunded liability has been reduced by over 3 million. And I, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that sounded pretty good to me.
Well, I think that's what they've been telling us. And I'll let, uh, Dr., uh, Mr. Palito, PhD.
It'll essentially double. So you'll get a little, you'll get over $6 million of relief from the 3 million bucks. But these projections, first of all, the.
We can't hear you anymore.
The council chambers was accidentally muted.
It's not, it's not our mics in the room. It's.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
This is a really good one. Um, so, so that spreadsheet assumed an April contribution. So we'll, we'll do it to contribution in June. So the, the savings will be a little bit, projected savings will be a little bit different. But they'll be in the same ballpark. Um, the other thing is the, the PERS liability here that Robert shows on the, on the, out, the five-year planning sheet, um, that's from the, from the Calpers, uh, 2023 report?
No, it's actually from Tom's numbers.
That's from yours. Yeah. So that's assuming, either way, it's, it's assuming Calpers 6.8% return too, which.
Correct.
We can't promise you that. The, actually kind of good news, I checked the S and P 500 index from July 1st last year to yesterday, or to the last day of May, and it was actually up a little over 8%. Now, again, Calpers has underperformed the S and P 500 four out of the last five years. And I predict they will continue to underperform, but nevertheless, that's a good piece of news that. But nevertheless, that's a good piece of news that we withstand a fighting chance of having a good year this year.
Okay, bringing it back to council, this is, oh, yes, yes. Well, I'm bringing it back to council, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I am totally on board with doing this, paying down. But I do want to share the fear that I had, that I had to overcome, and I've had multiple people reassure me. My fear was that we're counting in our budget of getting a lot of outside money. And right now, the state isn't at, the federal government's having problems, and FEMA's cut back, we may not even get our money for our floods over by the school. So we're, in our budget was a lot of money that, to me, is very iffy, and I don't know if we're going to get it. I think that looking, the farther out we look as the four years roll out, we're less and less likely to get it. So I was worried that we're going to hit into a point where we've done our drainage study, and we're sitting here with our shovel-ready projects, and then there's no money to pay for the shovel-ready. But I've been assured by multiple sources that we have enough buffer in our entire budget that we won't lose those big projects if we're forced to then fund them ourselves. So I've been assured by everyone that that's, so that's what got me over the line of worrying about putting money now as, excuse me, as opposed to doing it over time. So I, I'm good with it now.
Yeah, I agree.
But wait, can I just say one thing that supports that? Because I think that's a hundred percent right. Uh, but I also think that if we don't get federal funds for one of these big projects, like one of the two Anna S U projects, or, or one of the other projects, doesn't mean we're, we're going to foot the bill. We're going to have to talk about what it means if we don't get the federal funds. I mean, I don't think we're going to foot the bill to move the street light on Alameda. And my guess is we wouldn't, uh, you know, in and of ourselves foot the bill to do the roundabout. But I think those are things we would have to talk about if we're, if we lose the federal funds at any point. So we shouldn't just assume that we would foot the bill in, because that will have an impact on us. Uh, you know, maybe not over this issue. I, I think this is a good issue to go forward with, I agree with you. But I just think, you know, if something happens where we do lose very significant federal or state funds, we'll have to talk about it at that point, about what the consequence should be.
Can I follow up on what he said?
Of course.
The one area in particular I have anxiety about is that we're expecting more and more severe storms. We already have water drainage issues. We've not completed all our canal stuff, and it's very conceivable in the next five years that we have some serious water stuff where we may have, and we, if we don't have federal funding, that we may have to put some of the money toward drainage improvements, just for pure safety.
Or buy more sump pumps, no.
That's it.
Sandbag.
Comes up, okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Stacy.
So if we're playing a prediction game with all this, putting three million dollars down to save money in the future means that we have to be trying to predict what our future expenses are, and it's, I understand the math behind all the savings we will get. That is a very compelling argument. What I am worried about is if our federal funds go away, and we spend this three million dollars now, when we do have that conversation, are we even going to have options? Because this decision today might mean that decision is made in the future when the money is not there for the canal, or the money's not there for the roundabout, and we, our decision is, well, we don't have the money, so we can't do it. So because we decided today, so that's, that is the part that I'm really struggling here, because I feel like a lot of our public works projects tend to, the RFPs go out, we get bids that are higher, they go a little higher. It's hard to predict what future costs will be, which is what an RFP is asking us to do. This is not, you know, indictment on our RFP process. But we have a lot of things that we want to do already in this thing, and it's also not allowing, I'm worried we're not allowing any ability to add a new project in the future. If next year, we've done the station lane study, we have a big idea, there's no grant money for that, that's fully within Atherton. Are we super confident that we would be able to address the needs of our residents? Like, this neighborhood is very, very, very focused on having improvements made. And I think they're telling them, well, you have to wait five years because we spent three million dollars on pension, is going to be a tough pill to swallow. And so I, please, be very specific to me that we will be okay. Yeah, we'll take it out of our, well, you can't just tell me, like, the library will pay for it, which is the other part that I'm like, that's another.
Well, that's our money.
Yeah.
So, so, I mean, to Councilmember DeGolia's point, adding that additional funding toward the station lane project's construction, I mean, that's only a, we're estimating an eight hundred thousand or so solution. And we could add more library money to that, because that is our money to allocate. Uh, so that one, I'm not so concerned about. The upper Atherton Channel lining, re-lining project, the one where you got to see all the erosion and everything going on, that is all on the town. There's no grant associated with that particular project. The lower Atherton Channel area near Los Lomitas, where we're talking about the culvert and all that sort of stuff, that does have an S U community project funding grant of one point three eight million dollars. We are not sure if we're going to get that particular grant or not. The project costs more than that. We're going to have to contribute in some way from the town or from the school district to make that project a reality anyway. Uh, so if we don't get the grant, that's one point three eight million dollars of unknown funding that either the school or the school and/or the town will have to make up. I'm hoping the school would contribute a lot, because it does impact their property. The Alameda de las Polgus project, that street that Councilmember DeGolia was talking about, we are in the midst of the Secu NIPA process. That's going to be nearing complete, I heard from Robert this evening, that it's, as it approaches completion, the estimate is that it would be monitoring non-significant improvements necessary or changes necessary. That's still up in the air, we don't know yet for sure. From a timing perspective, that project does have two million dollars of grant funding toward it. From a timing perspective, it's September thirtieth, before we have to have an.
Approval from Caltrans.
Approval from Caltrans. That's not, as I previously thought, that's not, we have to have the project bid, bid out and awarded a contract. That's just approval from Caltrans. So if we, and that's tight, but totally doable within that, within that window. So we wouldn't lose that funding either. And those are our three big grants out there. Nothing else has been in the works.
I think one of the points that I understand that she's concerned about is that we're doing these plans to come up with new projects. And there, we've, once we've laid everything out, there isn't any new pro. So let's say we come up with something out of any one of our big, you know, master plans that we want to do, that is not on the calendar. So that means it's going to be way, way out there.
Well, I, I mean.
I think the argument, excuse me, I'll just, I can respond.
Okay.
I, I think what kind of makes me feel a little bit more comfortable about it is that the argument is once we see that the plan comes together and we get, you know, things going, it takes two to three to four years for that plan to actually come to fruition. Let me talk about the bike lanes on Selby. I mean, it was twenty fourteen when we did this, and we said, let's go forward and make this happen. And here we are, ten, eleven years later, you know, wanting to implement, and, you know, times have changed. So that's, and by that time, we will have recovered quite a bit.
I hope our, our, hope we are doing better than ten years for every project, you guys.
Well, no, it's four to five.
And I, and I hope so as, as well, but if.
Some of it, I understand it's big, E C R is going to take forever, because there's a bajillion people who have to be involved in it, but.
Can only do so many projects a year.
We can't, I mean, we can't move that along, it's county.
I get that, I'm more like, you know, I just want to make sure that in making this very financially responsible decision, we are not closing the door on other decisions in the future, and I'm.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you, you are. And I think if you look at that financial spreadsheet, you've got those master plans that you're going to be updating, the bike ped ones in the works is not going to be done until next year before you start to allocate. Okay, let's think about what projects we want to do. Then you got to do community outreach and pick them. Uh, the, the drainage one and the park one are one and two years out beyond that. There, any project that you're going to select from those is off this chart. It's, it's, it's beyond that five-year window before you even put that together. And you'll have funding for those projects at that point. You do have one big decision point, and that's in fiscal year twenty-nine thirty. That's a four million dollar ticket project, and that's the southern end of the E C R drainage. That's all on the town, there's no community partner in that one. So hopefully, we can get a grant for that, or we have to pull the trigger with town money. But it's sitting there in the hopes that we can get it shovel-ready and get a grant for that particular project.
You know, C K, you know, and One Shoreline, and, you know, all of that, they're, they're our grants. We just have to get all of our ducks in a row.
Yeah, but I suspect if we don't get a grant,
Yeah.
the question around whether we or not we do that project is certainly coming back to the council for determination.
Doing the, the lining of the channel, Marsh Road, repairing Marsh Road, I mean, that was all on us, right?
Yeah, and that was a huge project.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, we had to wait a long time before we had the money to do it. But, you know, and we didn't, we couldn't get a grant.
And we had the parcel tax.
And we had the parcel tax at that point, yeah.
The drainage parcel tax.
Oh, we had, yeah, and we had the parcel tax in. That's the other thing. The parcel tax raised one point two.
One point eight.
One point eight million a year for strictly roads and drainage improvements, okay? And when that last parcel tax did not pass, everybody said, well, it was time to not do it. It had passed, it had been in force since like nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-two, the, when the Prop thirteen was passed, and long time.
Time, except for.
Every, yeah, except for that. And so, you know, we, and it's, most, most parcels was paying like seven hundred dollars an acre, right? And that seemed like the biggest bang for our residents' buck a year.
So are you saying that tying it back to our survey, we could always, if there was a disaster, we could raise money that way?
Yeah, and, you know, the state may allow us to raise, well, that's a whole nother discussion, okay?
Yeah. So with respect to the A D P payment to the pension, that is a, a specific action and direction, so we can process that.
We have to have a roll call.
Do you have to have a roll call?
Because he's off, okay? So who wants to make the motion?
Make a motion? Our donation. Like a donation, allocation to our pension fund.
Whoever's talking isn't heard online.
Okay, so Bill Widmer, Councilmember Widmer is making the motion. Would you like to second it, Councilmember DeGolia?
I'd be happy to, but I'd like to hear the motion, because I couldn't hear the person speaking.
Well, he just said we're going to have you pay for it all.
The motion was to apply the three million dollars to pay down our pension and get that paid before the end of June.
Great.
Is that a second?
Including eight hundred thousand transfer from the Employee Benefits Fund.
Right, right.
And that's a second? Okay.
That's a second.
Okay, any, uh, all in favor?
All right.
Can we actually do, I'm sorry, can we do a roll call? Because Councilmember DeGolia is participating in teleconference.
I'm just not.
Councilmember DeGolia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Widmer?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Holland?
Yes.
And Mayor Loos.
Yes. Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? No. All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm not voting for another one of these, I just want to be clear.
Elizabeth, can I make a proposal for future discussion?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not agendaing, just.
I'm out, I'm done.
There's a question for a future agenda item?
Oh, yeah.
It was a question for a future agenda item, was that?
Yes, I'm just going to do that. So we're down to any council reports or comments? Any, Councilmember Hawkins Manueline has asked to present a potential future agenda topic.
Yeah, I would like to see if the, right now, our A D A P, our Emergency Response Community is really struggling to, and we need to focus a little bit on helping them. They don't have enough, they don't have enough board members to even exist anymore. So it's kind of at a crisis point now. And I would like to bring back a discussion around creating a liaison, a council liaison to A D A P. This came up once before, and there, and we didn't, we decided not to do it, but I'd like to bring that discussion back around. A D A P is in favor and have asked us. That would allow them to have more input into what to do next. So I would like to see if I could bring that topic of creating a liaison position back to the council at a, very soon, since they're in crisis, time.
So I have a question about that, because I'm not familiar about.
That's it, that's, that would be at the discussion.
Would that be at the discussion? Okay, so, all right, so, all in favor, everybody feel okay about that?
I don't, do, I don't know, how, how do we do it, George? Do we have, is this a vote of the?
There's consensus of the council to add it to a future agenda, I can do that. I'll put it on the June agenda, and the council can discuss it.
I'm just asking for consensus.
Okay, wait, so just to be really specific, we're only talking about a liaison, not about anything else related to the role of A D A P and the future of A D A P?
We're only talking about
Just liaison.
The, the agenda item to discuss, we're not approving it.
I want to make sure that we know what the agenda item is.
Yes, okay.
Is what I want to understand the constraints of what we are.
It's.
My understanding is it's to bring back a conversation about adding a liaison position to the A D A P organization.
But can.
Whether committees or commissions.
Can I, can I, can I encourage that in the course of setting that up, that it be defined broadly enough so that we aren't limited to only talking about the liaison, but we can talk about A D A P? Because I have a feeling people will have some perspective on A D A P that they'd like to share.
I don't know how that will go, would go exactly.
I, you can certainly broaden the issue. The challenge we had the last time was, it was a very broad question. And it was, to the Vice Mayor's point, the council's conversation really didn't know where to focus.
Right.
Or what the action and decision was going to be, and that created some discussion challenges.
I have a question about the role of a liaison to a resident-led organization, because I don't think we have such a thing for any of our other.
You, you don't? So if, it would be something that you would create, and I suspect you would want to create it with the same guidance that you do for other liaison positions. But that's up to the council.
Councilwoman Widmer has a comment.
Yeah, I, I think that we should just limit it to putting a liaison to the board, and then we can have a further discussion at a later time on if we want to do something more to enhance or help direct or bring in a, you know, a part-time staff member to help identify emergency response stuff for us. So, so, but those are two different topics, so let's just get the first one out of the way.
I've got hands over here, Councilwoman Hawkins.
I was just going to say that when we bring the topic of the liaison, we can talk about the state of what's happening, we can report out on what's going on. There was also a county-wide study conducted by, I don't know if it was A B A G or Cal, one of, one of those organizations funded, and they came up, they were looking at structures for volunteer organizations in cities, which ones worked and which ones didn't. And the ones that were most effective were the ones that had both the member of the council as well as either fire or police as part of the decision structure of that organization. So there's a whole county-funded study that says that. So we can present some of that for our thinking when, when we bring the topic up.
Councilman.
Well, that's different than the liaison.
Yeah, it is, it's much broader. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to point out or ask, we have a liaison for the Parks Foundation. Isn't that in, under that same category of a resident-led independent group?
Resident, it's a resident group that raises money then gives to the town, or does.
I'm saying, like, it maybe could have a similar
Yes.
structure.
Yes, they're a nonprofit group, and, and we have a council member and an alternate that serves as a liaison, they're non-voting members, they just.
Right, because they're more there to follow along, not be on the.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Fine with me, so our next meeting, you're wanting to do this for the June meeting?
I would, because we're kind of in a crisis point for the organization.
Well.
If it works, I mean, as soon as we can.
The agenda is being put together now.
So I can certainly add it as a discussion item. I don't necessarily have any specific staff report to present, but at that meeting presently, you've got the budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the full budget approval with all of its attachments and resolutions, you got appointments to various committee and commission roles, you've got the charter city standing subcommittee report, discussion on charter city, and then the two agreements from the closed session. City manager, city attorney.
Budget's good.
It should be quick.
Right.
Again, and again, and again.
Yeah, I, I agree, but those are the items that are on the agenda.
Committee volunteers could take something, because we have so many vacancies. I think it'll be fine. We haven't done an all-nighter recently.
We're not going to either.
Right.
Okay, so then are we going to then notice the ADAP people and make sure they're there to opine?
We'll make sure we notice.
The board or.
Whoever's left on their board, yeah.
So just who's in there?
Okay.
Mostly, yeah, the people just.
Well, it's 5:52, let's adjourn this meeting.
We have a hand raised? Sorry.
Oh, okay. Ann?
Yes, thank you. Thank, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask as a point of order, I know that the deadlines, maybe the deadline for submitting applications for town committees may have come and gone, and I believe that the council intends to act on those appointments at its next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So what I would like to know, as the outgoing chair, who is termed out on the Audit and Finance Committee, it, I would really appreciate being able to see not only the names of those people who have applied, but also whatever they had to say in their application, because I remember, you know, it has some significant things that it asked for, that really kind of helped you understand if they're the right person for the job, so to speak. So I'm just wondering if it's possible for me to get, to see those, those applications, and as the outgoing chair, to simply make recommendations, which you can totally ignore, as, based on what I know, because I think I probably know some of the applicants, but based on what their applications are, if I can suggest that, you know, Joe, Mary, and Whozy, what's it, you know, they're all really strong candidates, you decide which two to pick. But I, I guess I'd like to be helpful, especially since I feel like I'm a lame, lame duck. I'm out, I'm out of office at 2:30.
The, the applications that are currently submitted are public records. So you can reach out to Anthony, and he can provide you copies. With respect to whether, as the chair of the committee, you can lend your input to it, that is, you know, hasn't been done necessarily before, but it's a pleasure of the council.
Okay, well, I will reach, I will reach out and get, at least get copies, and then I will ask the mayor if she would like me to talk just to her or to anyone, or to the entire council, or if that's provoked.
Okay, thanks, Ann. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Okay, it's now 5:54. There's another meeting that starts at 6:00? 6:30? Oh, okay. All right.
We did it.
Thank you.